Yes, thank you Chair. So as you mentioned, there is a work session this morning on the 179th Street Access and Management Plan and Circulation. We do have some individuals here. Gary Albrecht is here next to me who will provide the presentation. And we also have Chuck Green who is also available to provide some information and answer questions. So I'll hand it over to staff.
Thank you Kathleen. Good morning Chair Bowerman and Council members. Gary Albrecht Transportation Planner with Clark County Public Works. I'm here to provide an update on the Northeast 179th Street Access and Management and Circulation Plan. Next slide please. Here's an overview of what we will discuss during this work session. Next slide please. Northeast 179th Street Corridor is inside Vancouver's urban growth boundary. It is designated as a four lane principal arterial. The Access Management and Circulation Plan promotes safety and mobility while balancing the needs of development. 179th Street east of I-5 includes hills and valleys that will require flattening out of the existing roadway to make it safer for our residents. Safety and mobility must be considered while determining future access points onto and from 179th Street. Next slide please. Clark County Public Works convened two advisory committees to guide the development of the Access Management and Circulation Plan, a stakeholder and technical advisory committee. This project fulfilled all of the Growth Management Act requirements for the adoption of this plan. That included an open house meeting, D Development Engineering Advisory Board, a planning commission work session and hearing. Next slide please. The 179th Street Corridor is a primary east-west route serving this area. 179th is classified as a four lane principal arterial designed to carry large volumes of traffic over long distances. Next slide please. This Access and Management Plan is a docket item that is part of the annual review process of amending the Clark County Conference of Growth Management Plan. This plan was placed on Community Planning and Public Works' work program in 2020. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on February 17, 2022 and voted six to zero to recommend forwarding and approval to the county council, the proposed amendments to the Arturo Atlas and adoption of the 179th Street Access Management and Circulation Plan. Council hearings were held on April 19 and May 3, 2022. On May 25 during Clark County Council time, council agreed to remove the 179th Street Access Management and Circulation Plan from the 2021 annual review cycle. Council directed staff to provide additional public input about the plan. Next slide please. Additional current outreach efforts included holding a hybrid in-person and virtual meeting on August 11, 2022 at the Public Service Center. To ensure that discrimination did not occur in the notification process, staff followed Washington State Department of Transportation requirements through Title VI Limited English Proficiency Determination and sent approximately 25,000 postcards written in English, Spanish and Russian to all property owners and site addresses living within five neighborhood associations impacted by this plan. Staff attended a neighborhood association council of Clark County meeting on August 8, 2022 and a Fairgrounds Neighborhood Meeting on September 15. And this slide shows September 11 which is an error, I apologize for that. Next slide please. Past outreach included a community open house at Alki Middle School on September 10, 2019, a virtual open house on January 27, 2022, legal notices for a planning commission hearing and council hearing published in the Columbia newspaper as well. Next slide please. Staff heard a strong desire from the community to retain left turn movements on the corridor. Questions about roundabouts around cost, safety and mobility to move the expected amount of traffic through these intersections. Concerns about changing the rural area into an urban area. Questions about funding of identified improvements when urban holding was lifted in 2019 and questions about concurrency. Next slide please. Staff heard community input about environmental concerns with this plan and existing developments. Questions about property acquisition by the county for road projects. Concerns about building a four lane road to accommodate future traffic volumes. Design improvement concerns over the I-5, 179th, Washington State Department of Transportation interchange project. Concerns over speeding, people speeding and enforcing truck drivers using compression brakes. Staff heard strong requests to council members attend neighborhood meetings and meet property owners onsite to talk about the plan. Next slide please. As part of the updated adoption path, this plan was moved into the 2022 Conference of Growth Management Plan and annual review cycle. The Access Management and Circulation Plan provides safety and mobility for all users. Staff is requesting that council move forward the Planning Commission's recommendation to adopt the 179th Street Access Management Plan and proposed Arturo Atlas amendments. The plan can be adopted this year but would not go into effect until completion of the 2022 annual review conference of plan amendment cycle which would occur July of 2023. Next question please. Next slide, sorry. That's the presentation. Thank you for your time. I'm here to answer any questions.
Counsel, do you have questions?
Madam Chair, I have a quick question. I know we're in, I wouldn't say in freak increasingly, but we do get input as we have had this new round of outreach. You know, there's a couple of dynamics that go on here because, you know, you went back to 2019 and it was among the most publicized work that the county was doing back in 2019. Yet then recently, all the neighbors there or some neighbors there said, geez, we didn't know anything about this, even though it was in all the local press. We had a number of very large, open public meetings about all the work that was being done up there. I mean, it speaks to an issue outside your purview, but what are the realtors then telling all these people that are then moving in? Do they just ignore the fact that there's a major road project going in, that urban holding was just lifted? I mean, it's an ongoing challenge. So some of these more recent issues have come from people that have just since moved there, since this work already was very public. But the most specific complaint that I'd just like to know if you have an answer for, you know, hey, we're just being told what's happening. We're not being heard. So my question is, of all these public meetings we've had, and we restarted that because we heard so much from people that didn't seem to know about the project, have you made any changes? Have the input by the public down to the individual property owners that complain about left turn, not having left turn lanes or the need for circles, roundabouts, has anything changed as a result of the input, most recent input that you've received through all of this public outreach?
Rob Klug, are you here with us?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Rob Klug. There have been some changes in some of the approaches, what we're looking at. The county code would require a median as the starting point for any minor or principal arterial. And what I've, what we are looking at right now is, is there a way that we can build the road and on an interim basis be able to allow left turn access for a period of time until the interim roundabout intersections are built to allow for shorter U-turn routes for the traffic when they are ultimately converted to a right-in, right-out? For example... I'm sorry, did you have a comment?
We're all listening.
Okay, thank you. For example, one of the potentials if we were to put a median down for a property that is midway between 15th Avenue and 29th Avenue, the U-turn route for somebody because of a median going in would be an extra 4,000 feet of travel to turn right out of the driveway, go to 29th Avenue, do U-turn and come back to right in front of the driveway to continue to the west. So what we're looking at is, until the interim middle roundabouts are built as part of development or future projects, what can we do that will allow us to be able to allow those lefts to occur within the curb lines that are going to be built just to, just to allow for that for a period of time, it could be a couple of years to maybe a couple decades depending as to how fast those roll on. But one of the, one of the key things that I think is important about this plan is that one of the challenges that we have on any project for requiring developers to build an onsite or offsite improvement is whether or not there is right-of-way associated with the future needs. A developer doesn't have the ability to purchase or acquire right-of-way on the other side of the road by law, only the county can do that. And so one of the things that this actually allows us to do is that by determining where the future roundabouts are going to be, it would allow us to be able to start providing TIF credits to the developments as they occur coming up to those future intersections and block out the areas that we would not put houses in, would have to then be purchased and demolished and moved out to be able to build these future roundabouts. And so that's, that's something I don't, I haven't heard really in the conversation is how do we future-proof this corridor analysis? And this entire process that we're going through, one of the benefits that we have is for the purpose of future-proofing our needs on that corridor. Now happy to take any questions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead Counselor.
This is maybe less a question, more a comment in figuring back, you know, Gary said, I received communications from people in the area. Some have moved in fairly recently, within the last year or so, and claim that they know nothing about what's going on. That's a, that's an issue clearly if they're not being informed by sellers or real estate agents or others, it's a responsibility to do that. There's nothing we can do per se, they'd have to pursue civil action, I assume, some other remedy. But the, still the concern is the perception from the communications that I've received that, that the county continues to go make a presentation on this is what we're going to do and that the people, again communicating back to me, don't believe that, that there's really anything on the table to, maybe a few tiny little tweaks, maybe, but there's really nothing on the table. This is the plan, this is what's going forward, we're informing you, but we're not really asking you. And I, I can't judge because I wasn't at the most recent meeting. But that, that whole concern that continues to exist there that they don't believe that they really have a place at the table.
Chair, if I may, and I see Ken later is on our county engineer. And Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, we do hear that feedback and we want to ensure that the public has an opportunity to ask questions and provide input. And I think from the last meeting, there were some concerns about a left-hand turn lane. And it's my understanding that staff actually listened and went back and found a way to incorporate potentially a left-hand turn lane and build the infrastructure so if the population increases in the future, the infrastructure is already there to make adjustments to that to ensure safety. And Ken, is that accurate and if so, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, and thank you, thank you Kathleen. Counsel, this is what Rob Klug was just referring to and if I can maybe boil it down a little bit more, keep it at a higher level. That section between 15th Avenue and 29th that Rob was stating as an example, the, right now, we won't have a, an intermediate roundabout to provide those, those kind of short movements for somebody that's trying to get to the freeway if they're coming from the, the south of 179th. And so what we've looked at is altering the design, which is underway right now. It's at a 30% design level for that segment of the road. And what we would do is essentially make use of those four lanes, recognizing that in that future condition, we, we would have an intersection control that's, that's an additional roundabout. But in the meantime, we can take advantage of that additional lane space and Rob can probably clean up the way I'm saying it too, but to provide, to continue to provide left turn lanes for the public into those, those main access points that they're, that they're concerned about. That wouldn't happen necessarily on a driveway level, but at least it would provide the ability to, to get in with left turn lanes along that segment until such time as development comes in and, and then builds another intersection. And then as the traffic demands need it and we want to provide a safer condition along that, that segment of the corridor, we would, we would then be revisiting the right turn lane only and be configured that we could provide that. So kind of an interim solution, but I think it does help us with the transition, at least for the residents and with the safety needs of the corridor as well.
Additional question? Go ahead.
May I add to that? This is Rob.
Please.
So something that we're considering is something as simple as striping the road, building the road with the four lanes and striping it so that there's two lanes going eastbound up the hill, a center turn, a center left turn lane and one lane going down the hill westbound? Or something more complicated than that? So yeah, there's, there's options that we're investigating to find out how can we provide that in-between time to provide as best access as possible and still meet all the project goals?
And, and I would say, you know, this, this is a direct result of listening to the community and the concerns. And we recognize that long-term, we, we need to provide a safe corridor for, for this travelway. And there's a condition where, kind of this in-between condition where I think we can still allow the left turn lanes that, that are of concern.
So follow-up if I may? Or a question? So if, if you're looking at potential solutions and adjustments based on the feedback, which is what I hear you saying, do you have any intent in having at least one additional follow-up meeting with the public to say, this is where we were at, this is what we heard, here's the changes that we're proposing to make? Are we hearing you?
Well, we have relayed this information at, at the Fairgrounds Neighborhood Meeting. And, but I, we have not, staff has not had an additional open house meeting since the, since the August 11th meeting.
I just personally think that it would serve everyone well if there was an opportunity to have a follow-up and say, we've made changes and is there anything else that you, that you want to say that we need to hear? I, I know it, it takes more time and there's costs and everything else, I appreciate that. I'm just, I'd just much rather bend over backwards to make sure that we're showing that we are really listening to what they're saying. And the only way I know to do it is to get back out with the public.
Yeah, and Counselor Rylander, if I may, I, I definitely appreciate that. I think it is important for us to communicate back to the public. I will say, one of the complexities for us is, is actually just setting this up on the design cycle and then making sure that we have, that we've vetted this as a potential that, that actually works for the corridor. So there, there are quite a few design pieces that we need to incorporate. So there is a lag in, in our ability to make sure that it works, that we've vetted it correctly, that we have a safe condition for the, the alteration to the design and then, and then to get back to the public with something that we say, yes, this is viable and, and this is, this is something that we can do. And so I, I still have to learn kind of how that sequences a bit, but I know once you add the, kind of reserving that spot for future roundabouts that, that Rob was referring to for development and TIF credits, we don't have a clear mechanism in place for that right now and that's something that we're, we're looking at and working on actively as well, so.
I appreciate very much what you're, you're saying that you are doing, especially with regard to the left turn lanes and to an extent the roundabouts. However, I keep hearing the word, this is a temporary solution and I am concerned that it is considered to be temporary. I'm also concerned with, when going back out to the public, whether it's in an open house or whatever the forum, what is the nature of that communication? And the perception of the public has been, of those attending, that it has been far too much one way and meaning from you to them, saying this is what is going to be. And I don't know if we could just brainstorm how that communication pattern can be different so that it will be more satisfactory. I really liked your slides nine and 10 in your presentation, but they gave far more things that the community was concerned about than just left turns. And each and every one of those and others that we've all heard from the public need to be addressed to in that two-way communication pattern. So I think, you know, in, in response to the desire to move this forward at some point in the very near future for the GMA annual review and so on, I'm really frankly a ways away from that until we can see what the communication is that's taking place and how it's being addressed. And, you know, everything will not go the way that the community would like to see it because you're the professionals, they are the neighbors. And there's a difference in perception from those two, those two things, but they do need to have a balance. And that is the balance that, that I know I'm looking for, to know that there is an acceptance of the project. It's a lot of money for the county and it really needs to be done very well. And I think we've got a ways to go for that. And this is not addressing you and your work. I appreciate very much what you've done since you've come aboard. This goes way back, way, way back. And frankly, I wish that this sort of communication had started way, way back, but to the extent that it didn't, here it rests on your shoulders. So thank you for picking up the mantle on this, but we do have a ways to go.
Thank you Chair Bowerman. And Gary, I was wondering if, if you would want to address that as far as our communication back on some of the other issues, maybe not the specifics, but the, the additional documentation that details that out?
Yeah, sure Ken, thank you. So Chair and Counsel, so we have went through and compiled the questions and responses to the questions and we have them posted on, on our webpage and on the council webpage under the work session. So, and as, you know, in, in a way to look at it, that is part of the, the communication feedback back to the community without me personally going out there and, and reading each question and responding to each question. So, and you know, if, you know, we're, we're brainstorming here and, you know, the, I, we go back out to the, the neighborhood and they have specific things in mind and, and our plan has looked at wetlands, habitat and, and the topography and, and the, the intersection locations that we've, we've designated for crossings are, are the best available approaches to, to place. And so I, you know, staff can go back out there, but they, they get frustrated because staff keeps saying the same thing. They want to be in, you know, in, in, in the, in the room baking the cake with us. They want to say, hey, this is what I want and here's why, but we've already provided answers of why it doesn't work. And, you know, and I, I, I like the idea of providing more input about what we're doing, but it's just, I'm, I'm not sure how we come up with a different answer.
So, so I'm Chuck Green and I've been assisting as a consultant, but I also have the benefit of living in the neighborhood. There's a couple of things I wanted to also supplement Gary's response. There are a number of points, there are a number of questions about what went into the locations of some of the intersections of the circulation roads. And what you don't see on here is we have re-looked at those. And so, and part of what Gary was saying is that re-look has confirmed that we believe we've provided the best solution to resolve or to address some of the concerns about wetlands, about property impacts, about neighborhood impacts. Having been, having been part of that hybrid open house and what wasn't mentioned was that was attended by over 200 people both here and online. So when you have 200 people in the room, it's, it's pretty difficult to have that intimate discussion. But subsequent to that, I've had some of my neighbors who did participate in that have noted that people who live around the 50th Avenue area have different interests and anxieties about this than somebody who's over at Northwest 11th. And so their interest is in more of a smaller focus group discussion where you can provide that communication education, what went into this and have that ability for some back and forth that having 220 people in the room at the same time can't afford. So that would be one thing I wanted to relay to, to all of you is what I've been hearing as a member of the neighborhood, but also to let you know that we have re-looked at some of these, the questions that were raised. Some of them did get put onto the Q and A that was posted a few days ago. And, and some of that, which is the more technical analysis, it's hard to frame a technical analysis in a Q and A document, but has been done to re-look at and directly address some of the comments that we did receive at the open house, but actually subsequent to that from a couple of the constituents that I know Gary's met with.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So there was, I want to refer back to the monumental effort that I thought we went through back in 2019. And we had several briefings and work, work sessions as well as public hearings on what was going to be needed for concurrency for lifting urban holding in 179th and that the time was right to do so. That was a monumental decision and, and a lot of public hearings and a lot of public information. So we went, we took a step back and did a reset just because of the, all the clamor that we were receiving from the area that didn't seem to know any of this was going on. So we've now done that. Now, so what my suggestion is, because we're not going to please everybody, I know that, it's impossible. You know, there are some people that are directly impacted in a negative way as we look at a greater positive impact for the county. It's just inevitable. Can we, can I suggest that we at some point have one of those briefings to us again in a public hearing on, okay, here's where we're at? And with some emphasis on, here's what we heard, here's what we've changed. You know, not, and to the, to the Chair's point, it's good that we take some temporary measures during construction and, and the great deal of difficulty with the terrain that's out there. But we focus on what has changed. You know, what were we originally briefed on was the plan and here's where we're at today after all the other additional input that we received from the public, from the neighbors. I just think that's a prudent thing to do and then we'll do, do our best to publicize that public hearing.
And I think, and staff and others can correct me, you know, the, the word temporary is, I would say it's more of a phased approach because it's not something that we're building and spending a lot of money on and then it's going to tear it up to then do the, the permanent long-term fix. It's the short-term fix that will allow the infrastructure to stay there, not lose money and then build it out as the community grows and as the, the needs improve. and then build it out as the community grows and as the, the needs improve. So I just wanted to provide that clarification.
Kathleen, if I may. I, I completely agree, that's the entire intent of this is to waste as little of the taxpayer dollars as possible, build it once as close as we can. And so that's, that's the intent that we're taking with this interim phased approach.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I was reading an email that came in. Yes, go right ahead, please.
So I, I honestly really do appreciate all of the tremendous amount of hard work and effort that's gone in over time, going back below these number of years. Unfortunately, I think that my perception is that the sort of COVID timeframe also played a havoc with this because brakes were put on everything and it got out of people's mind and out of their attention. And then there's been enough turnover in, in property owners in the communities, either the people who said, I don't want to be near this once it gets going and I'm going to sell it and may or may not have fully disclosed information to the buyers. But I think that, that COVID time, as much as I detest using COVID as a, as a crutch for everything that might have gone wrong. I think there's an impact there. So as the Chair mentioned, I, I guess I'm, I'm supportive of moving forward, but I, again, I, I just, I'm just compelled to make sure that the public believes that they are being heard and you can show what you, what you heard, what you've adjusted, what you couldn't adjust with the explanations and the reasons that go with that, that you're following good practice, et cetera. I mean, I, and, and if that takes another general meeting or if it took some, some localized, smaller group meetings of 20 to 30 people, I, we could, we could talk about how maybe the best fit. And I know it eats up staff time and I know it consumes more money. But in order to push this forward from a personal standpoint, I, I just need to know that, that we really have, have done everything possible. I'm not saying that you haven't, I just, I'm just pressing to take it to, to one more step.
Thank you, Counselor Ryland, can I, can I ask a question? Will you attend these with me?
Go ahead, please.
Will you attend these future meetings with me, with the public? Absolutely, great, thank you.
If I could throw something out there, this is, I think this is probably only the second work session I've been to. So I, I want to make sure I'm not disrupting anything procedurally. But one of the things that we have going on here is we have design projects that are, that are funded, that are moving forward in the corridor. And then this presentation and work session today is really about the access management and circulation, circulation plan. Obviously, those are connected very intimately. And what I'm hearing, the request from counsel is, is that we provide an update. I, I'm prepared to wing that update right now, if it's appropriate, and show you where we're at. I don't have, I don't have an update on dollars for the projects, but I could at least step through visually. And if, if it's appropriate. So I'm going to put that question to counsel and, and to Kathleen and make sure that I'm not too far out on a limb. But I think I'm, I'm prepared to do that if it's helpful today.
I am, exactly, I am asking for exactly that, but not today. Because I think the public needs to have notice that this is going to be presented and an ability to see that their voice was heard and at least the greatest measure on all these issues that, that are still up here, community input. You know, what changes did you make? Obviously, some of them weren't, probably didn't result in any change because you already had it right and you just needed to prepare an explanation. But I think we should notice it and have a future update.
Well stated, Counselor Medici, and, and I appreciate as well your willingness to do it now. There is almost no substitute for now. However, in this case, notifying the public of the upcoming discussion of this type is important so that those who wish to be tuned in can be, wish to have their questions ready, can have them ready. There had been mentioned, Kathleen, of a public hearing versus a work session. What are your thoughts on that?
Public hearing is really looking for council action after they hear the community input. So an option could be, if the council desires, is to schedule a work session but allow public comment. We don't usually do that, but there's certainly the exceptions and council may want to desire that instead of doing an official public hearing with no action.
I, I would personally think that is a good approach and we could structure when in the work session that, that input comes so that it is organized in, in some way that makes sense and is easy to follow. Other thoughts from counsel?
I agree.
I agree as well. And in the interim, we had issues with funding. I, I mean, I'd like to have an update as to, you know, we went through a lot of work on many options on funding all the concurrency that needed to happen, all the projects, infrastructure that it needed to happen. And then some of that we found was poorly calculated. I think we need an update. And so I, I appreciate, it doesn't need to be a public hearing, but it should be open to the public. And I don't know that we'll get 200 people here, but I'd like to, to advise them of, that their voices have been heard. I'd like to know what the update is. This is a big project, opening up the Vista area for, for development. And it's going to take years more and a lot of things are ongoing. I mean, for a couple of years, we were really pressing the legislature, legislature to, to advance some of those monies for some of the interchange improvement. I think it's time for an update.
When could that update be scheduled, Kathleen?
We will look at our calendars and then if we can add some financials, I would like the financial piece to go through our finance team prior to that being public as well, just as another lens. So we'll look at the calendars, hopefully we can get it done soon, but I'll talk to staff and can, you know, at a minimum, report back on when that will happen next week.
Thank you. So we'll look for that suggested date. And is there anything else on this topic that we need to add today? And hearing nothing, I believe that we may move forward. Thank you very much for your transparency in talking about these things with us. And that's exactly what we're looking for, that's what we want more and more of. Thank you for providing that. So we will move to the council time agenda. It is 10:03. I'm going to suggest that we re-